February 13, 2024, it's 9:00 AM. Called to order, invocation, and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Charles.
Good morning. Let us pray. Father God, we commit this council meeting to you. We may engage, may we engage each task with faith and determination. May we manage each situation with wisdom and value. May we speak and serve with integrity and purpose. May we each embrace every member for what they bring to this meeting. Lord, we invite you to work within us and through us. Bless this meeting today, all those present, as well as all the lives of those we will encounter afterward. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united in the heavens and on earth.
Number three, motion. A, motion finding that the advance posting and notice requirements of Article 8.1200 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas, have been met in relation to all minutes and pending ordinances and resolutions on this agenda, and that the reading of such items be confined to the captions as are agreed upon by the ordinance and resolutions. We have motion.
Motion.
A motion by Mrs. Salter. A second by Mrs. Hennigan. Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mrs. Hennigan?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
And Mrs. Salter?
Aye.
Motion passes. Number four, citizen comments. At this time, we'll be taking from the audience on any subject matter whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker. Your comments ought appreciated, as the Texas Open Meetings Act do not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda. Your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department for prompt consideration. A member of the audience that desires to speak during the city council's consideration of any specific agenda item is requested to know by city staff prior to the start of the meeting. I have Xavier Pittman.
Yes.
If you'll come to the podium here, state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Good morning, council. Last name Pittman, first name Xavier. 1099 Gil Road, Orange, Texas. I drive 230 miles around here every day. It's my job. Since I've been in this location down here in Orange, I think since 2020, it's come to my attention that I had to send in a contract of me getting my trash picked up. I have Republic Waste that picks up my trash. But I never knew that I had to send in a contract to the city to let the city know that they're not picking up my trash and I have someone else to do that service for me. But I'm being charged forty-seven dollars a month. And I think that's unfair due to the fact because, to me, that's a ghost pickup, meaning that whoever you all sent out or whoever the city sends out to obtain trash, well, they're just writing off, yeah, we picked up the trash. But where's the trash at? I don't have a personal trash can. I have a dumpster. So a six-yard dumpster set at the same time. Why is it necessary, if I can come for an order of pickup from the city of Orange to pick up trash, why am I being charged trash? That's only $500 a year since 2020. And that's just concern, you know? If I have to go ahead and send that contract in, I will. But at the same time, I didn't think I have to send no contract due to the fact that I had made my own arrangements outside of the city to someone to pick it up. And down that whole road there, everyone has trash picked up either from Republic Waste or some other entity. So that's my concern this morning.
Thank you. I just, I don't have anybody else on the list where anybody else likes people. Okay. I'm opposed, public comment. Moving on to five city announcements, city staff announcements, and city events.
Good morning, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. Good morning. We're excited to announce the return of the Spring Break Shootout Jet Ski Races, March 15th through the 16th, at the City of Orange program and Riverside Pavilion. On Friday and Saturday, events will begin at 10:00 AM and will include, of course, jet ski races, DJ music, AK zone, and food trucks. It will be a great event for all, and so we're excited to have everyone come out. Again, that's March 15th through the 16th, beginning at 10:00 AM.
Both days, 13th?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So in December, our customer service manager over the water department resigned. We get a search, maybe found Michael Malfris. He comes to us from Chupalay. He had nine years there of customer servicing management experience, and he has a bachelor's in Auburn, from Auburn University. So we're very excited to welcome Michael Dyson out.
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. Want to say?
I'll say goodbye. Kind of sad that gentlemen already left the chamber. But, Council, I'm looking forward to working with city races and things that we have here. I know it's water. I know it's sewer. And obviously, there could be issues from time to time. It's not perfect. But we do want to strive to do exactly what you guys do and make our city a great place for the citizens to live and enjoy every aspect of their life, including how much they pay for their trash and water and all of these things. I'm looking forward to working with everybody in the city. They did great, and I think we'll be able to.
Well, thank you. Welcome to the table.
I'm looking forward to it. It is my pleasure. I am bilingual. Chris is very strong. She gave my help yesterday. She didn't know it, but she got my help. But I'm looking forward to working with everybody.
Thank you. Moving on to number six, consider agenda. A, October 16th, 2023 planning and zone commission meeting minutes. Okay. B, January the 9th, 2024 Orange Economic Development Corporation meeting minutes. And C, January the 23rd, 2024 regular city council meetings. Any more to motion?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mrs. Hennigan. By Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Mrs. Hennigan?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
And Mrs. Salter?
Aye.
Motion passes. Number seven, resolutions. A, final reading. Consider a resolution approving an EDC infrastructure grant agreement within St. Chicken, 1602 West Hart Avenue, Orange, Texas, 77630, in an amount not to exceed $200,000. First reading was January the 2020, 2024.
Good morning. This is just the next step in the process for St. Chicken. Prior to the first reading, the 60-day waiting period was met. So like I said, this is just the next step in the process to get everything going.
Okay, thank you very much.
More to motion?
Second.
All right. A motion by Mr. Charles and a second by Mrs. Hennigan. Mrs. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey? Mrs. Hennigan?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
And Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
D, consider a resolution authorizing the chief of police to execute a memorandum of understanding with the West Orange Cove Consolidated Independent School District Police Department for the purpose of information sharing when feasible assistance with after-hour calls for service and entertaining the information into the police computer system. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. What we'd like is authorization to execute an MOU, very similar to what we just did with Little Cypress Forest School District Police Department. So be for information sharing, entering items into the computer when needed. And they are also not a 24-hour-a-day police department. We will have the after-hours calls. But if we need anything, we will contact our own call person from our city. This is almost fair. We'll be part of it down in L.C.
Any discussion?
Very simple.
Have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mrs. Salter. Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mrs. Hennigan?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
And Mrs. Salter?
Aye.
Motion passes. C, consider a resolution of the city council of the City of Orange, Texas, authorizing the city manager to sign a water easement agreement between the City of Orange, Texas, and Blue Beacon Incorporated, provided for an effective date and other matters. Okay?
Good morning, Mayor Pro Tem and Council.
Good morning.
I'm glad to be here this morning. Quick trip, which is developed just there on 62, installed a water line extension when they started their property development. When they did say they ran into problems with the location of the water line, so they had to make some adjustments. When they made those adjustments, the water line ended up outside of the easement. Blue Beacon, the adjacent property owner, was gracious enough to grant a utility easement for us to service that line. And this item allows us to accept that easement so that we can continue to service that line. Staff recommends approval.
Okay. Any discussion? Motion?
Please, ma'am.
Motion by Mrs. Hennigan and a second by Mr. Bailey. Mrs. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey? Mrs. Hennigan?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
And Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Motion passes. D, consider a resolution awarding a contract to PBS DX Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $75,923 for bid number 2024-03 under a water well liquid chlorine. Okay?
Yes, you had this on your agenda last meeting. However, the firm changed its name. This contract is for the use of chlorine to disinfect our water. Because of the name change, we felt it appropriate to bring it back to you for consideration, and staff recommends approval.
Any discussion? Have a motion. Motion?
Sorry.
A motion by Mrs. Hennigan, second by Mr. Charles. Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mrs. Hennigan?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
And Mrs. Salter?
Aye.
Motion passes. E, consider a resolution awarding a contract to Semley Aquatics Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $64,550 for bid number 2024-04 Water Well Treatment Chemicals FY 2024.
Yes, so this item was on your agenda last month, and we requested that it be pulled back due to an outbreak of discolored water in the north end of the city, north of Valley Pain. Through the, as we investigated that, this contract provides phosphates which help with that color, that discoloration of water. We asked this firm to change its intensity of the chemical to increase the intensity of the chemical to help address those discolored water situations, which they agreed to do and no change in cost. So they will be providing a stronger chemical to address those issues. Again, at no additional cost, $64,550 for the year. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, is that, you said north of Valley Pain?
We had an outbreak when we brought the meat water back online recently of discolored water. So we had to go through an intense flushing of the north of Valley Pain. In particular, it was just in residential areas.
The Cypress Bayou area and all of that?
Cypress Bayou area. Some of the other, there are the other residential areas out there. What was interesting was it was, seemed to be just the residential areas, not actually.
But they've been having a lot of problems. So they'll be happy to know that we're addressing their problems. Yes. My question is, I know you said it's something harsher. Do we look into what the harshness is as far as, is it just for coloration or the safety part of it?
So this particular chemical is a polyphosphate. And so it locks, the simple explanation is it locks up the iron particles that are in the water. When, when that water sits in the line a little bit too long, this polyphosphate chemical drops out, and then you get discoloration of the water. So by going to this slightly more intense chemical, it will stay in the water longer, which will tie those, the dis Irons up. So yes, we did look at the harshness. It's still well within the unit, not much.
Okay, for our sake.
Yes.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Have a motion. Question?
Sorry.
Motion by Mrs. Hennigan, second by Mr. Charles. Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mrs. Hennigan?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
And Mrs. Salter? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you. F, consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter a contract with JBUAD Planning Group, LLC, for the purpose of providing professional services for analysis of impediments to fair housing for the City of Orange. Miss Johnson?
Yes, every five years, we, the city has to do a consolidated plan. And part of the consolidated plan for HUD is to do the analysis of impediments. JBUAD had bid five years ago, but they were actually $4,000 higher than what they bid this time. They were the only ones who did the proposal for us. And they've done similar cities our size. They've got good reviews, so we recommend approval.
Any discussion?
Second.
Okay, motion by Mrs. McKenna, second by Mrs. Hennigan. Mrs. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mrs. Hennigan?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
And Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Number eight, discussion action. A, consider a motion authorizing the city manager to enter into a license agreement indemnifying release with the Melody C and HJ Lifter Stark Foundation for the use of Stark Park or Art of the Park, April the 6th, 2024. Please leave.
The 22nd Annual Art of Parks and the 5th Annual Park Show will be held on Saturday, April 6th, at Stark Park. The license agreement outlines the duration and responsibilities and final, I'm sorry, financial arrangements between the Stark Foundation and the city. Please note that this is a hotel occupancy tax expenditure that is a part of the CDB budget as for motion from council.
Make a motion. Motion by Mrs. Salter?
Or second?
Second by Mr. Bailey. Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mrs. Hennigan?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
And Mrs. Salter?
Aye.
Motion passes. B, consider a motion approving action taken by the Orange EDC in the form of a motion to intent approving an EDC incentive to Legendary Concrete slash Todd Ellis for infrastructure improvements at Old Orange Cafe, 914 West Division Avenue, in an amount not to exceed $50,000 for the purpose of economic development. Mrs. Brad?
Good morning. So I'm, we are all familiar with Old Orange Cafe. This project will go to improve the parking arrangements at Old Orange. They will go to pave the entire parking lot to make it safer, easier to access. So there is some property that is owned by Old Orange Cafe, and there's also an easement at City of Orange. So this project will be managed by city staff as a whole. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that.
Any discussion? Have a motion? You say this all in the evening, the, the, the park in that area?
No, some of the property is actually owned by Old Orange Cafe, but there's also an easement that is owned by the City of Orange. So this will go to pave both portions. So the EDC has chosen to fund both portions to help out with the parking on Old Orange's side and with the, with the paving for the City of Orange.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
A motion by Mrs. Hennigan and a second by Mrs. McKenna. Mrs. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey? Mrs. Hennigan?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
And Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Brad. C, consider a motion acknowledging receipt of the city's quarterly investment report for the period ending December 31st, 2023. Ms. DeTod?
Yes, well, good morning. The investment report, though, is to report the past liquidity and how our investments are doing. This report is as of December 31st. So our total cash position as of December 31st was $31,309. And our average rate of return that we were earning is 4.8, which is, if you look on the report, it's on page 444. Last year at this time, it was 2.47. So we're earning a whole lot better. I want to trade for sure a lot. Our benchmark is 5.2. So we're not far off our benchmark, which is up as unusual. Usually, we're not that close. So we're, we're doing really well with our street count at Wells Fargo. We still have our investment at First Bank and Full C, which is $250,000. And that ranges early August. So overall, the city is still doing well, and we're happy with our investment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion? And motion?
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mrs. Salter. Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mrs. Hennigan?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
And Mrs. Salter?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. DeTod. Nine, reports, city manager.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. The only thing I have, not this week, but next, so February 21st, 27th, and 23rd, I'll be out of the office for a city manager conference. So if you need something, reach out. I'll call you back if you need something immediately. Call today. So not this, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, but next.
Thank you, Mr. Prince. B, city council report starting at my rapid. Mrs. Salter? No report, just thanking everybody for coming out and being here. Thank you. Mr. Bailey? Mrs. Hennigan?
Thank you so much. We're getting on top of this water situation.
Mr. Charles?
Fundraisers. LCF Lions PP&amp;J drop-off is still happening. Bring peanut butter or jelly to Odile's or my store. We're trying to help feed the needy. They cannot feed themselves. We'll be doing this, so February 23rd. The three buses across the street is a Shiner's fundraiser. We all should be on it. I'm sitting here. We should be headed to either the U N S to enjoy the last Fat Tuesday of the year. I'm so cheap, Bilbo. I didn't recognize you even here. I didn't see your uniform on, so we're headed to a meeting or something. That's all I got.
Good morning. Happy Valentine's Day soon. Remember, everybody, keep your love one goal something, even if it's just a kiss on the lips. Also, it's morning brought today, so let the good times roll. If you want to roll all over to Louisiana. I think the buses have already rolled, but it's not too far. Across the border right there, that, that river, you could even swim it. It's not that far. So have a good time with that, and go Chiefs!
All right. I believe Mrs. Salter has something else she would like to say. Yes, I wanted to just say, I don't know if everybody is really aware, but about Just a Little Help. Just a Little Help is a 501(c)(nonprofit) organization that I'm a part of, and I want you guys to know about it because it's a little different than normal pantries. You can come in, anybody. It doesn't matter what your income is, where you live, your car. We don't care about anything like that. This is a pantry that has been created for Orange County for any and everybody to come through. It's not based on your income. You come in and you're able to shop and get the things, sort of like a grocery store, from onions, bell peppers, tomatoes, you name it. Avocados, we have it. And it's for everyone. So I just wanted to let you guys know about it for the City of Orange family as well. Thank you, Ms. Salter. Thank you. I'm going to, there's going to be a ribbon cutting Thursday, February 22nd, 2024, at the New Water Burger. It is, the address is 3124 North 16. And it's going to be at 10:30 AM, and everyone is invited. It's going to be nice. Yes. All right. That's all of my announcements. So we'll go to number 10, adjourn to a closed executive session. A, deliberation with city attorney pursuant to Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. One, deliberation with legal counsel pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with city attorney regarding legal matters, Edward Lee Gonzalez and Michael Renee Gonzalez versus the City of Orange. Number two, deliberation with legal counsel pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.1071, consultation with city attorney regarding property in the vicinity of the corner of Campus Street and Moss Avenue, Orange, Texas. So if you're not part of this council or staff, you can wait in the library. So if you're not part of this, uh, council or staff, you can wave in the library. Number 11, reconvene in open session. A, take action as necessary regarding items 10A1, 10A2...
10A3.
10A3. Okay. One, first reading. Consider ordinance abandoning the surface only of a portion of the alley located west of Moss Avenue, south of the former right-of-way for Dakota Street, and north of Campus Street, formerly known as South Street, described as all of the circumtract in Orange County, Texas, and being in the Alexander Collier survey abstract number 56, and being a part of that circumtract known as Block 3, shown on the subdivision, Flat David Bland's addition to Orange, and being recorded in Volume 1, Page 21, of the map records of Orange County, Texas. Repealing all ordinances in conflict with this ordinance to the extent of such conflict, making certain findings thereto, providing a severality clause and providing an effective date. Mr. Martin.
This city staff recommends that the surface only of this former alley west of Moss Avenue be abandoned.
Okay.
May I make a motion?
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Salter, second by Mrs. Henigan. Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
I have a question. Shouldn't the action, when we reopen, on 10A1 be no action taken? We'll go to 10A1?
I'm sorry, you're correct. Mr. Gonzalez. So we go back and do that? Because you can change.
Okay. So we're on 10A2. Aye.
Subdivision.
But again, the motion is, as printed there, if you also move that, that's what we're voting on now. The ordinance is lined up on the numbers.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Van. Mrs. Salter.
Now, I see what you're saying from the above, but we don't do motions just by the number that's listed on...
No action taken.
So in regards to deliberation, legal counsel, in regards to the consalts, there's no legal action taken. But the motion was to consider an ordinance abandoning that portion.
So, that passed?
Yes. Sorry, go forward. Yeah, we'll read it in a minute.
Okay. Number two, final reading. Consider ordinance abandoning the surface only of a portion of the right-of-way for Campus Street, formerly known as South Street, described as all of the circumtract in Orange County, Texas, and being in the Alexander Collier survey abstract number 56, and being a part of the circumtract known as South Street, shown in the subdivision, Flat David Bland's addition to Orange. Repealing all ordinances in conflict with this ordinance to the extent of such conflict, making certain findings thereto, providing a severality clause and providing an effective date. Mr. Martin.
I heard you said I could, I'm getting over, I already said the final reading would be the first reading on the... First reading. The first reading. You want, you want to bring this back?
Okay. Say it again?
Just to be clear, this is the first reading.
This is our first reading.
Yeah.
Okay. So this is the first reading?
Yes.
Do we have action taken?
I have a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Motion.
All right.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mrs. Henigan, second by Mrs. Bailey. Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mrs. Henigan?
Aye.
Mr. Van?
Aye.
Mrs. Salter?
Aye.
Motion passes. Three. First reading. Consider ordinance abandoning the surface only of a portion of the right-of-way for New York Street, described as all of that circumtract in Orange County, Texas, and being in the Alexander Collier survey abstract number 56, and being a part of that circumtract known as New York Street, shown on the subdivision, Flat Gilmore's second co-edition, and being recorded in Volume 3, Page 20, of the map records of Orange County, Texas. Repealing all ordinances in conflict with this ordinance to the extent of such conflict, making certain findings thereto, providing a severality clause and providing an effective date. Mr. Martin.
This abandonment of the right-of-way again to New York Street, there is no public need for this blocking, so the staff recommends that the surface only be abandoned.
Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Henigan, second by Mr. Charles, Mrs. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mrs. Henigan?
Aye.
Mrs. Charles?
Aye.
And Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
It's a lot, it's a lot harder than...
Yes.
And then if you would, if you don't mind, just so, if you would say, coming out of the executive session, no action taken in regards to deliberation with the...
Coming out of the executive session, no action taken in regards to the consalts?
10A1.
10A1, out of 10A1. Okay. Number 12, adjournment? Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
All right. Call a favor, aye?
Aye.
Was it Mary too?
Adjournment.